Father and I, God in heaven, we come to thee in prayer and we thank you for all of your many blessings. We thank you for the rain. We pray, God, for relief for those in West Virginia who are suffering from flooding. We pray, God, for those who are ill, that you would restore their health if it be your will. We pray protections on those who stand in the breach between us and those who would do us harm. Give us wisdom tonight, fathers. We consider the things we are here to consider. All of these things we ask in thy name, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Katie.
All commissioners are present.
Okay. All right, I want to make a couple amendments to the agenda. We're going to add a presentation about Thicall as the first presentation. And item, we'll make item number one, a letter of support. No, on first item, on the regular agenda. After the, well. We can make it before the consent. Which that'll be after the public hearing and before the consent. All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Now can I get a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
A motion to adopt the amended agenda.
We've got a first and a second to adopt the amended agenda. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to the approval of the minutes. If there's no changes to the minutes from the June 3 regular meeting and public hearing, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
I move to accept the minutes from the last meeting and public hearing.
Do we have a second? Got a first and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our first presentation for the Thicall. Who's doing that, Sean?
I will be chairman. Scott, can you bring up the trailer? We have a couple videos to show for the Thicall Memorial Project. The first is a trailer for their documentary that they did on the Thicall. This is the Day That Shook Georgia trailer. We'll show the trailer and then we'll also show their Emmy Award that it just received this weekend. And then we have our proclamation that I'll read off after that. Scott, can we go full screen with that and back it up to the beginning?
No, they aren't, because we did it earlier. Okay, just start it over, Scott.
Scott, if you can bring up the next video that showcases the actual Emmy Award from this past weekend. Ms. Janey, if we can, I know you weren't able to be there at the Emmy Awards and I wish I had an Emmy to give to you, but would you and everybody else here for the Thicall Memorial Project, would y'all kindly come up here to the center, please? There's a X right there you can kind of see in the middle of the floor. While they're coming up, commissioners, I'm going to read this proclamation. This is a proclamation of the Camden County Board of Commissioners honoring the Thicall Memorial Project and the award-winning documentary, The Day That Shook Georgia. Whereas on February 3, 1971, a catastrophic explosion occurred at the Thicall Chemical Corporation Plant in Woodbine, Georgia, resulting in a loss of 29 lives and injuring more than 50 individuals, marking one of the deadliest industrial disasters in Georgia's history. And whereas the workers at the Thicall Plant, predominantly black women, bravely and skillfully manufactured trip flares for the Vietnam War, contributing to the nation's defense while facing dangerous working conditions. And whereas the extraordinary heroism of first responders and plant survivors demonstrated the strength, courage, and compassion of the Camden County community in response to the tragedy. And whereas the Thicall Memorial Project has worked diligently to preserve the memory of those who perished and those who survived and to ensure that their story is honored and remembered by future generations. And whereas the documentary, The Day That Shook Georgia, directed by Patrick and Ann Longstruth and produced in association with the Southern Documentary Fund, powerfully tells the story of the Thicall explosion, honors the voices of survivors and first responders, and highlights a grassroots campaign to award the victims with a Congressional Gold Medal. And whereas The Day That Shook Georgia was nominated for three Southeast Chapter Emmy Awards by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences in the categories of historical, cultural, long-form content, director of long-form content, and graphic arts, visual effect. And whereas on Saturday, June 14, 2025, The Day That Shook Georgia was awarded the Southeast Chapter Emmy Award in the category Historical Cultural Long-Form Content, earning distinguished recognition for the excellence of its storytelling and contribution to the preservation of this important history. Now therefore be it resolved that the Camden County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and recognize the Thicall Memorial Project and the award-winning documentary, The Day That Shook Georgia, for their outstanding work in memorializing the lives lost and forever changed by the Thicall Plant explosion and for bringing national attention to this vital chapter of American history. Be it further resolved that the board expresses its deepest appreciation to the documentaries' creators, the Thicall Memorial Project, and all those involved in keeping this story alive and offers its continued support for the campaign to secure congressional recognition for the victims and survivors of this tragic event. Proclaim the 17th day of June 2025. Thank you all so much. Commissioners, if you'd like to come down, we'll get a photo. I also have one more thing. I don't have an Emmy to give, but I do have this beautiful bouquet of flowers Chairman's bringing up, so. And please stick around, too. We do have one more item for you all. Just stick around for like another five minutes, if you don't mind, please.
All right, who's doing the next presentation? Mike?
I've got the next two, Chairman.
Okay.
What a difficult thing to follow right there. I don't know if people know about this with, in regards to Thicall as well, I'm sure those of you up on the dais do, but the Thicall disaster was the direct precursor that caused the United States government to create OSHA, the Occupational Self-Safety and Health Administration, was a direct result of what happened right here in Camden County. So you guys and your families are heroes. We appreciate that. All right. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for some time this evening. As all of you surely know, my name is Mike Spears. For the audience, I'm the Director of Human Resources and Risk Management for Camden County. One of the great pleasures of my job, other than having the privilege to look after our 450 employees and their dependents, is that sometimes I have an employee in a department that truly do remarkable work, and I cherish the fact that I get to share those accomplishments with you. So tonight, I'd like to take a moment to recognize an important achievement that directly affects the safety, resilience, and financial well-being of Camden County's residents. Thanks to the dedicated work of Cassie Turpin and our floodplain and soil erosion coordinator, along with the entire Planning and Development Department, Camden County has once again maintained its Class VI rating in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, or CRS. This rating is a big deal, y'all. Anybody who lives in Camden County, no matter where you are, you probably should have flood insurance. It's an important deal. Because it means, keeping this rating means that homeowners in the unincorporated Camden County will continue to receive a 20% discount on their flood insurance premiums. And for most NFIP policyholders, that discount adds up to real savings. So since joining the program in 2012, Camden County residents have saved over $1 million in total flood insurance premium because of the work of our planning, development department and our community rating system. But this just isn't just about savings. The CRS program, managed by FEMA, it's designed to reward communities that go in above and beyond the minimum requirements in floodplain management. And this means doing kind of the hard, behind-the-scenes work to reduce flood risk, protect property, and ultimately make our community safer and more resilient. So maintaining this Class VI rating is not automatic. It requires constant attention to planning, documentation, and implementation of best practices. And that's exactly what Cassie and her team have done year after year. Their work demonstrates a deep commitment not only to the technical standards of floodplain management, but to the people who live and work in Camden County. So on behalf of this board and the citizens that we serve, I want to offer our sincere thanks and a well-deserved recognition to Cassie Turpin and the entire Planning and Development Department. Your hard work makes a real difference, and we're proud to have you representing Camden County. So thank you for your continued service. We truly appreciate what you do. Ms. Cassie and Joey, I'd ask you to come up, please, and stand on the X. So Cassie, my gosh, it's got to be in 2018, maybe? 2019? I hired Cassie in my HR department because we were short-staffed for a while and they needed a 10th person to come in and just help us do some filing. And Cassie got there and hit the ground running and has been amazing at every step along the way. And where she finds herself now and is how valuable as she is to Camden County, I'm really proud of you. So I've got a couple little certificates. One's going to be for Cassie specifically, and the other one we're going to give to Joey for the Planning and Development Staff. So it's a certificate of recognition to Cassie Turpin and grateful recognition of your valuable service to the citizens of Camden County for maintaining the Class VI rating in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System, presented this 17th day of June 2025. And Joey's Yours is the same, but it's directed at Planning and Development Staff. Do DJs still exist? Disc jockeys?
All right, Mike, next presentation.
Chairman, I have the next one as well. One more proclamation here on the evening for you. So this is a proclamation of the Camden County Board of Commissioners recognizing Waste and Recycling Workers Week. So whereas the National Garbage Man Day, if you can believe that's what it used to be called, began years ago to show community appreciation for the dedicated individuals working in the garbage, sanitation, and recycling industry, which later became officially known as Waste and Recycling Workers Week. And the earliest efforts to regulate waste management date back to 3,000 B.C., when the first landfill was established on the island of Crete, where large holes were dug for refuse, which is where the term "the dump" comes from. So since that time, sanitation, solid waste workers have selflessly and tirelessly worked under all conditions, including inclement weather, pandemic, civil unrest, and war, often at personal risk, to provide essential services that protect the public health, prevent disease, and keep our communities clean, safe, and beautiful. And whereas within an area of approximately 782 square miles and encompassing hundreds of miles of roadway, the residents of Camden County rely on the consistent collection and proper disposal of waste, recyclables, compostables, and yard debris to promote a clean and well-maintained community regardless of the challenges such as adverse weather or global pandemics. Whereas the Camden County values and celebrates our local sanitation and solid waste industry professionals for their unwavering commitment to the well-being of our residents, businesses, and environment, and seeks to elevate the history contributions and profession of these essential workers. Now therefore it be resolved that the Camden County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 16 through 22, 2025, as Waste and Recycling Workers Week in Camden County, Georgia, and urges all residents to join us in expressing our heartfelt gratitude to the hard-working men and women that keep our communities safe, clean, and healthy each and every day, proclaimed this 17th day of June 2025. So I have Cyrus and Kristen here from the landfill. I'd like y'all to come up and receive this proclamation, please. Mr. Cyrus Roberts is the Operations Manager for the Camden County landfill, and Kristen is the Office Manager out there, and she does a whole lot more than what that title would represent. So congratulations to you guys.
All right, this brings us to our first public comment section of the night. We'll limit them to three minutes and agenda items only. Anybody registered, Katie? All right, anybody from the public which speak before the board? Come on up, Jan.
My name is Janey Everett, and I live in Woodbine. And I just want to thank everyone for their best wishes. And I think that our executive producer, Ann Longstruth- And I think that our executive producer and Longstruth, she got it right on Saturday night. She thanked the incredible people of Camden County. I love you. I want you to know that you are incredible. I believe in you. I'm a seventh-generation person in this county. I'm not a tourist, and I know how great you are. We can do great things together, and I thank you for the recognition. Ms. Emeloo, she's got a lot of work to do. Let's give her support all the way as the new CEO of Thicall. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing none, this time we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting, convene a public hearing.
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting and convene a public hearing.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second to convene a public hearing. All in favor? Motion carries.
Good evening, Commissioners. So today, I am proposing to amend Section 1130B3B2, provisions for flood hazard reduction, standards for manufactured homes and recreational vehicles where base flood elevation data are available. So since Camden County participates in the community rating system, our floodplain management ordinance must exceed the minimum National Flood Insurance Program standards. Currently, our ordinance does not meet these minimum requirements. So if we do not update the ordinance, our CRS classification would be downgraded from a Class VI to a Class IX. The change would redo, would result in the loss of the county's 20% discount on flood insurance premiums. Planning Commission does recommend approval on this item.
Thank you. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Anybody wish to speak against it? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Now we need a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting.
Second.
Got a first and a second. All in favor? All right, we're back in the regular meeting, and this is one of the things that we, we added at the start is a letter of support. The actual letter of support is for the Thicall. So Sean, you want to take it over?
Yes, Chairman, thank you. So Ms. Janie, Ms. Everett, we wanted to kind of surprise you with this one. I didn't tell you about this one. I called you earlier. I know you've been asking for this for a little while, and I know that, I'm not sure, how many people have you had the chance to sign the petition for the Congressional Gold Medal? Do you know the number?
2,483.
2,483. She knows it exactly. So we're praying that this adds, you know, we're sending it on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, which in my opinion encompasses almost 60,000 people for Camden. So this is to President Donald J. Trump in the quiet town of Woodbine, Georgia, a devastating event on February 3rd, 1971, forever altered the lives of American families. An explosion at the Thicall chemical plant claimed the lives of 29 workers and severely burned and wounded many more civilian defense workers, many of them African-American women, who were assembling trip flares in support of the United States military during the Vietnam War. Today, the Camden County Board of Commissioners proudly stands in support of the Thicall Memorial Project and its mission to secure Congressional Gold Medal in honor of these brave individuals. Their tragic sacrifice represents one of the worst industrial accidents in Georgia's histories and a sobering reminder of the risks civilians have taken in service to our nation. The Thicall Memorial Project has worked tirelessly to preserve the legacy of those lost and the strength of those who survived. Their grassroots effort to obtain the Congressional Gold Medal is a powerful act of remembrance, one that seeks justice, honors sacrifice, and expresses the gratitude of a nation that should never forget. To support this effort, we are enclosing a copy of the powerful documentary, "The Day That Shook Georgia," directed by Patrick and Ann Longstruth and produced in association with the Southern Documentary Fund. The film compellingly tells the story of the Thicall explosion, gives voice to the survivors and first responders, and highlights the importance of acknowledging this often overlooked chapter of American history. "The Day That Shook Georgia" was recently recognized by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences with three Southeast Chapter Emmy Award nominations, including Historical Cultural Long-Form Content, Director Long-Form Content, and Graphic Arts Visual Effect. On June 14th, 2025, it was awarded the Emmy for Historical Cultural Long-Form Content, a distinguished honor that underscores the excellence and impact of the documentary storytelling. We hope these materials provide meaningful insight into the significance of the Thicall tragedy and the enduring importance of honoring those affected. We respectfully urge your support for the awarding of the Congressional Gold Medal to these heroes whose contributions to our nation must never be forgotten. With respect and appreciation, signed, the entire Board of Commissioners of Camden County.
Would you like to come up? So I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let all the group come back up one more time, and we'll get another photo, and we'll be sending this letter to the President this week.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Everett.
We finally got rid of the word "cat."
Just to send the letter? Okay, we'll go ahead and do it. All right, can we get a motion on sending this letter to the President?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send this letter of endorsement to the President of the United States from the County Commission of Camden County, Georgia.
Second.
All in favor? All right, this brings us to our consent agenda. I move that we approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Cassie, you're back up.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to propose the amendment to Section 1130B3B2, provisions for flood hazard reduction, standards for manufactured homes and recreational vehicles where base flood elevation data are available. Planning Commission does recommend approval.
All right, I make a motion. We approve this item.
I'll second.
This is a motion to approve the, an amendment to the UDC. This is basically, we found a gap and we're closing the gap. Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment about the FEMA process. I, I actually did what Cassie did and the department did for Tifton last year, and they're only trying to maintain an eight. We're trying to maintain a six. So this improvement to our UDC shows the, how precarious we are to maintain a six in our CRS system. And I can tell you, FEMA is not easy to deal with. If you want to deal with bureaucracy, do what Cassie did last year. And that's a guaranteed fact. So I'm, I'm in full support of this.
Thank you, sir.
And this, the lower the number, the better. All right, we got a first and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cass. All right, Janice?
Good evening, Commissioners. I would like to request approval to add a processing fee for credit card users at Two Rivers Gun Range, the Solid Waste Authority, and the Curbside Collections. These fees have constantly gone up, and we need to be able to add that 3% fee to try to offset some of those costs that are associated with that. Each site has a different provider, different software, so you have to find a software company that works with that credit card company, and they have to, how to work together. So it's been a little bit of a juggling act, but we came up with a 3% fee.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve with a little bit of discussion. Very little.
I'll second you there.
We got a first and a second. All right, you want to start the discussion off?
Yeah, I just want to explain that basically this is a credit card charge that we get anyway. And what we're trying to do basically is level the playing field. Because a lot of people use, you know, credit cards that they get benefits from, and then we lose the 3%. So what we're trying to do is basically level it out. Am I correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
It's a user fee for convenience of using the credit card.
And it's the same fee and the same amount that we charge for collecting property taxes in the tag office, right?
I'm not sure what the tax collector does.
That is, I believe that's maintained by the state, because when you log on, I think it's the state. Not positive about that, but it has nothing to do with us.
I just know last time I went to go pay, I had to pay a user fee, so I think a lot of us are already accustomed to.
Yeah.
Used to it.
And I believe the other municipalities are already starting to charge.
There's only three different places that we accept cards, right?
No. Tax Commissioner, Planning, and then these three. I think that's all. Curbside, Two Rivers, Tax Commissioner. Yeah, that's it.
Landfield.
So planning and zoning, we don't do a user fee? Or you're already doing it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, we got a first and a second on this. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Don't be shy.
Making sure you're ready for me. All right, great. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Tonight, for Camden County Fire Rescue, we're coming to request the approval to purchase three Braun Chief XL F-550 four-wheel-drive gas chassis ambulances, as well as having them stocked with the state-required equipment. These ambulances will come from the SPOSS 9 purchase, and we're asking for 1.382 million dollars for these three ambulances. We have them split up into three different ambulances with ambulance one coming in 12 months, and then ambulance two and three coming in 24 months. At that time, when we would take delivery of the ambulances, when they would expect payment. We also have $75,000 of equipment for all three ambulances, so $25,000 for those equip, for the state-required equipment for those ambulances as well. Entertained? Any questions if you have any?
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the purchase of the three Braun Chief XL ambulances.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the, of the three Braun Chief XL F-550s. Any discussion? I know we're moving away from the diesel because you can't idle the diesel anymore, basically. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good evening, it's my turn.
Yeah.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Lisa Boyett, Camden County Fire Rescue. I'm here to, I'm gonna do item number, the second item, is to request the approval to purchase one E1 1500 GPM rescue pumper. It'll be a 2026 or newer four-door Freightliner. This will be the sister to the five that we, you have all graciously already purchased in the past through the unincorporated fund. This will be a 1,000-gallon booster tank. What we're requesting is $539,964, which will be purchased from the unincorporated fund. This will replace a 2017, which that 2017 will be actually replacing an older reserve vehicle, which is a 2015. And as, at this time, I'd like to, also, I'm sorry, also requesting 40,000 of that 539 would be the equipment purchased for it. So at this time, I'm requesting one 2026 Freightliner pumper.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of one 1500-gallon rescue pumper and associated equipment.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the rescue pumper. We'll open it up for discussion. Where is this one gonna be located?
This one should be 15 Brown Town.
Brown Town. I'm finally getting one, Lanny. All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries. All right, next item, you're doing that.
At this time, I'm also asking for the approval to purchase a 3,000-gallon tanker from Fouts Brothers. This one will be for the purchase of $459,758, which 37,000 of that will go to the equipment. This one would be replace the 2008 military truck, which is the last of the military vehicles that we have, which would be Station 14, Harriet's Bluff, right there at the interstate.
Can I get a motion on this item?
I move to approve the purchase of a 3,000-gallon tanker from Fouts Brothers.
Second.
We've got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the 3,000-gallon tanker. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
All right, this is item number 17. Who's doing that? You're doing that, Martin?
Mr. Chairman, I want to add the idea of acceptance of the amendment to the Woodbine Library Board for the trustees' bylaw and approval of appointment to a Woodbine Library Board of Trustees.
Okay, we'll split those up. We'll do the acceptance of the amendment first.
Okay.
Do we have a, well, you want to make a motion just on the acceptance of that?
That's right.
I'll do it.
Oh, I thought I made that.
Well, you did them together, so.
Okay. All right, I make a motion that we accept the amendment to the Woodbine Library Board of Trustees bylaws.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to accept the amendment to the Board of Trustees bylaws. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? I'm gonna abstain on that. All right, since we're gonna expand the board, do we have a nomination for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Colleen Winkle to serve on the board of Woodbine Library. Second.
We got a first and a second to nominate Colleen Winkle for the board. Any discussion? All in favor? I'm gonna abstain of that because I don't necessarily agree with increasing the number of the people on the board. All right, we'll move on. All right, this time we need to adjourn the regular meeting and convene the Solid Waste Authority.
I move to adjourn the regular meeting and convene the Solid Waste Authority.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
This is to convene a Solid Waste Authority. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, Seth, well, we gotta do the amendments. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Here are none. Can I? Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We adopted the Solid Waste Authority agenda. If there's no changes to the minutes from the May 20 solid waste authority meeting minutes, can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the solid waste meeting?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to accept the meeting minutes from the May 20. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to the first public comment section for solid waste. Any registered?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ricky Manning.
Good evening, Rick Manning from Bullhead Bluff. I've got a few things I'd like to question about this task order for the vertical expansion project. The vertical berms at the landfill, for decades, have been leachate problems. So here we are, expanding. Are we doing anything different? Or are we just going to go by what we've been doing in the past, and we're still going to have noncompliance with leachate leaking outside these berms? Because the public's in the dark on everything going on at landfill. Y'all know it. Public knows it, and they're getting more aware of it. I've been tasked by the public to investigate the landfill with the leakage and what's going on out there, so here I am. I have been investigating it now for a couple of months, and I've got some more meetings coming up in a couple of weeks with the DNR. So anyways, I am very against this unless we get some explanations. Are we stopping the leachate problems or not? So here we go. I mean, we're using the same consultant firm. He's here tonight. Are we wasting our time with this consultant? They have not solved these problems. I've got a whole book full of them right here, and got more coming. My thing is, I think we should have a citizen on this board to have oversight. Everything's kept in the dark with the solid waste, until you really go digging and investigating. And, you know, I really ain't got time to be digging and investigating like I've been doing. But the citizens come to me to it. They hadn't come to the board. Don't ask me why. Well, you know why. Because we're not going to get any answers, just like I'm not. I would like for the board to have me a meeting set up with Seth, the Atlantic Consulting Firm, and the DNR together. If they want them in there, if not, I'm just going to do it all on my own with the DNR and the state. It doesn't really matter to me. I'd rather keep things in-house. I always have wanted to keep things in Camden County. I will go outside the county and go to the state. I'm already going with the district now. I will continue, because this is getting ridiculous. We're still leaking. I've got these documents. One commissioner out of all five of y'all have come to me and asked me to look at some of these documents about what's going on out there. One commissioner out of five. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else wish to speak before the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. All right, item number one.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. For the first item tonight on the Solid Waste Authority agenda is the task order for the design and permitting of the municipal solid waste landfill vertical expansion project. And we have Robert with Atlantic Coast Consulting, who is our consultant of record for the landfill, who's going to go through a presentation on exactly what that project is. Go ahead, Robert.
Thanks, Seth, and Commissioners.
Do you want to pull the microphone over?
Thank you. For those that don't know, the facilities are out on the west side of the county. A brief history. So at this site was first permitted in 1992, with the small orange area up there originally permitted that was estimated to last the county about four years. Four years later, we permitted the blue area that's out there, and that's the area, that's basically the footprint of the current MSW landfill that's out there today. The calculations that we did last summer show that that area is going to be full under its current permitted airspace by 2031. What you previously approved us to do was to look at some studies for expanding that. We recently completed the site suitability study to add municipal solid waste airspace over at the current CND area and expand the CND area to make up for that. And then also, the third piece of that site suitability report was to do a vertical expansion of the current footprint. This is that current footprint that's all constructed, all having waste placing on it currently. The vertical expansion is basically, if you think of a cross-section through the currently permitted area, the salmon-colored areas sort of where the existing waste is today, the permitted space is the, below that solid line, and the green area up there is the proposed vertical expansion. So what we're proposing to do is just take it higher over the current footprint of liner that's already built and constructed. So that's, we're estimating that if we go up to these elevations shown on this cross-section, that we'll have an additional 10 years of capacity at this current area. Obviously, we've got a, part of this task order is to do all the design to prove that that is, meets the current regulations, and then go through the permitting process, which is going to take several years.
All right, Commissioners. So again, before you consider approving the task order for the design and permitting of the MSW landfill vertical expansion project, this will maximize our capacity, which is right now targeted to be a capacity at September of 2031, and this should take us into 2040. And so the cost is $150,000 to Atlantic Coast Consulting, and staff recommends approval.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the task order for design and permitting of the MSW landfill vertical expansion project, but I definitely do have some questions.
I'll second it. This is to approve the permitting, design and permitting for the vertical expansion project. Go ahead, do your discussion.
The question is for the consultant, sir. To Mr. Manning's point, leachate has been a concern out there, where we have had a few issues of it leaking. With the vertical expansion, does that create any undue pressure that would cause leachate to leak more frequently?
I would say no. The, the, the existing facility has lined area with HDPE and clay liner all the way around it and going to the berms, all the way on the outside of it that surround the whole thing. The leachate outbreaks that have been noted in DNR's inspections are normal operational issues that happen at a lot of sites, and you have to address those. What I will point out is that the site is surrounded by groundwater monitoring wells that, where we go out and test the groundwater, which we're going to talk about in the other task order, twice a year, and test them for all different kind of constituents that are, that would indicate if there's leachate in the groundwater, okay? We test the stormwater that comes out of the ponds out there regularly to see if there's leachate impacts. We test for methane gas that comes from the landfill to see if it's going off-site. We have no current conditions where that is detected at this site. And the records at EPD show that. Those records get turned in, they're in EPD's database that anybody can go online and download. They go in there twice a year.
Something like that's not inevitable, but we're not unusually high compared to other landfills. Thank you.
Correct. And just, just so the board knows, I know in my tenure here at the county, we have made a 90 or above at both of our landfills by EPD, which, out of 100 to 90 out of 100. Most time 95 or 100 during the inspections that we received.
So let me, let me ask this question. Is part of the design and permitting process moving forward with the vertical expansion, do you look at the additional leachate and see how the existing leachate collection works? Is it going to be overtasked? I think that's what Commissioner Smith's asking for.
Yeah, that's, that'll be part of the design process. So we'll, we'll do leachate generation calculations to prove that the current system will be able to handle that additional capacity of waste that's on top of what's out there now. So we basically end up with a book about six inches thick full of calculations to prove that we meet the regulations that are required for you to be able to expand that landfill.
Excuse me, I just want to clarify one thing. You spoke about leachate and methane gas. And, and you said we don't have any problems. Do we have any problems with either one of those independently from the other? Because I want to be sure we're not painting with a broad brush here. Neither leachate nor methane have been violations that have been beyond the norm for this size operation.
We're not detecting any of that in the groundwater wells or the surface water monitoring points or the methane wells that are at the perimeter. Correct.
And these modifications are within the footprint of the liner and the clay base that would protect or retard the expansion while it's being addressed if there is some type of breach?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not sure this is a question or a statement, but when you go through your design and permitting process, if you find out the existing system is insufficient, will we remediate the leachate collection system, make it adequate for the expansion? I guess that's a statement and a question.
If I, if, what, if the calculations prove that the expansion couldn't be handled by the current system, you would either reduce the size of the expansion so you're not going up as high? You would propose less waste on there? Or, or it means you've got to start permitting your new area over, you know, behind the current CND landfill?
Anything else? All right, we got a first and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, next item, Seth.
All right, Commissioners. The next item is a task order that authorizes and directs Atlantic Coast Consulting to proceed with assisting in providing environmental monitoring at our three landfills at the MSW CND and at the Vacuna Road landfill. This is an item that comes up for every year that ACC does for us. They, the monitoring that they do is required by EPD, and the scope of services they provide is semi-annual groundwater and surface water monitoring, as we were just speaking of earlier, for the MSW CND and Vacuna Road landfills. Also quarterly methane reporting of the MSW CND and Vacuna Road landfills. And then also, we have the annual corrective action progress reporting for the Vacuna Road landfill since it's shut down. These funds are budgeted every year. It's already in the FY '26 solid waste fund. And like I said, this is an annual contract that we do with ACC every year to report to the state for us and help us in that.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
I'll move to approve the task order that authorizes ACC to do, to proceed with assisting, providing environmental monitoring at the three landfills.
You have a second? Got a first and a second to approve the task order? Any discussion?
Just briefly, does Vacuna Road landfill ever go away for monitoring?
That's a good question.
Well, that's why I asked.
We're talking job security here, aren't we?
Well, that, that decision is not on us, unfortunately. That's on EPD. So if, if we have, I don't know, three years of clean data out there, then you can request that EPD release you from monitoring that. But, but that's just monitoring per the closed permit. The, the landfill is going to be the county's forever. Right.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Item number three.
All right, Commissioners. The next item is approval for the repair for the damaged Komatsu D-65 Dozier by Linder Industrial Machinery. This Dozier was damaged in the Easter fire that took place at the MSW landfill, and it was sent to the manufacturer in South Carolina to be repaired. It sustained significant fire damage during, during the fire, which included burned hydraulic lines and deteriorated engine wiring harnesses. It also revealed that the starter, the damper assembly, and the def injector was also damaged and required a replacement due to the extent of the fire impact. And so our staff recommends to the, the board for the amount of $68,775.47 to Linder Industrial Machinery. I do want to let you guys know that this item is being covered. We got a check from our insurance company for this fire. It was covered under our insurance policy.
All right, can I get a motion on this item?
Make a motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
First and a second to approve the repair of the Komatsu Dozier. You want to start off?
Yes. Could we put in motion a standard operating procedure that we do not leave that equipment in the path of any possible fires from now on? In other words, if it was up on top of the, the area of the landfill that was caught on fire, could we put it someplace where there's not fuel underneath it to burn it down again?
That's, that's difficult to do. And the reason being it kind of got stuck, part of the waste from the fire, and it caught fire and burned up in it and got caught in it. But we can definitely look into that, Commissioner.
Were they using that Dozier to kind of put out the fire?
They were putting out the fire with that Dozier.
So it was actively involved in fire suppression?
Yes.
Not just a victim of being parked overnight and the fire came up and burned?
Absolutely.
Okay, I misunderstood that. So yes, if it's in, in service and that was a necessary risk. But what I was going to suggest is that we even incorporate some kind of fire suppression system? Put it where there's a dilute hose available, automatic, whatever?
So separate from this item, we purchased a fire suppression system for this Dozier due to this.
Because, because as difficult as that is, it's hard to swallow that kind of expense if we can avoid it.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Do I got anything else?
So it's fully funded through insurance?
Yes, Commissioner, we received it. We're getting the check for that.
That was my question. What's the deductible?
$1,000.
Easy enough.
Booty can pay that.
I might need to borrow some money if Commissioner Goodman.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the repair. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item.
All right, the last item for tonight is for the approval of purchase of a Caterpillar D-3 Dozier from Yancy Brothers in Brunswick, and this is for $158,700. We have some funds available in the solid waste authority fund to cover this purchase. This Dozier will be replacing our current 2015 Caterpillar D-5 Dozier that currently has around 11,000 hours on it and has multiple issues. So the current Dozier we have is, has mechanical issues, including a worn undercarriage, failing final drive, overheating due to cooling system issues, and a hydro, and the hydraulic system's overheating. Additionally, the air conditioning system is non-functional. Given the machine's high hours and repair costs, we don't believe it's a good investment for our buck to, or it's cost-effective to try to fix all the issues that that Dozier has. And so we have found the Dozier that's available for purchase that has 2,500 hours on it and is two years old. It's a 2023, and it is, looks and runs brand new. We've actually had it for the last week out at the landfill, and our guys have been using it, and they've made the statement that they thought it was brand new, and it's running quite well. In addition to that, it comes with four ye, uh, four ye, it eat 4,000 hours and four years of a powertrain and hydraulics warranty that is included in your agenda packet. in your agenda packet. And so staff makes recommendation for the purchase of the dozer.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the 2015 Calipara D-5 dozer. Is that the one we're buying?
Actually, a D-3.
It, it's, it's a D-3. They just changed their numbering on, on their dozers, but it was by far the most inexpensive option with great deal on it compared to the others.
When I called you this afternoon, you basically told me 158,000 is a great deal, right?
It is. If you compare it to the other ones, so we had three other options. So one of them was brand new. That's why I had to, that's why we did another one, because I wanted to compare oranges to oranges rather than apples to oranges with a brand new dozer. And if you look at it, they're really between 180 and 200,000 for the same dozer in other locations. So we looked for all dozers within the southeastern United States. And this one was located in Macon, and they brought it to us here and let us use it for the past week as well. So we had our Director of Fleet look over it and to make sure it was mechanically sound, and it is running great.
Also told that you took a expert out there, and he said it was good?
I did, I did. I took our, our former landfill director and former Commissioner, Mr. Lanny Brandt, out there, and he said it was great. So we definitely appreciate you coming out, Commissioner Brandt.
Well, since our expert's here, how many hours a year do you think we put on these dozers? You're the expert. No, I actually assess question, but since you're here. So we end up getting a year and a half, two years out of this under warranty?
Okay.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the new dozer from Yancey Brothers. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, this brings us to our last public comment section for solid waste. Comments be limited to three minutes. Are any speakers, anybody wish to speak before the board?
I want to speak once again about this, uh, raising up this elevation on the landfill. I, I cannot see y'all approving this and going, going along with it when we're still having the same leachate problems. This right here. This is the letter from the DNR right here, folks. Any of y'all care to see them, one of you Commissioners has seen them. This is all this year. Same leachate problems been going on since the late 90s, same places. Now, look, folks, I live out there. So I do have a little vested thing in here. Uh, I got the pictures. I got people coming down from DNR, and they'll be down shortly. There's been a duck pond that's been right across 110 from that place since my great granddaddy's days. I hunted it when I was a young'un. I caught little red-eyed bream out of there to use for catfish bait up until about the middle of 2000. Wonder what happened? Well, the landfill happens to be built on the head of the North Fork of Riley Creek, which feeds the Still River, feeds right through that duck pond. I witnessed the fish die in 2004. And I ain't up here just lying about it. Well, where'd it come from? I don't know if it's a landfill or not. It could have been from the dioxins from the C and D, the old stuff left there. I don't know. But somebody needs to investigate something when we're still having leachate problems. When we have big rainy bits like we've been having, that leachate don't stay down, Your Honor. Y'all don't think y'all hauling all that up here to the, to the Woodbine Sewer Plant, because it's running right off. Where's it running? It's running right down through where the duck pond used to be, which is gone because it killed everything in it, even killed the beavers. Now, you kill a beaver, you done something. So I, you know, I've got nothing wrong. We got to have a landfill. That's a necessary evil. But we've been hauling stuff to this landfill from all over to cotton picking southeast Georgia and north Florida. Half of what, we don't even get sampled. All you doing is going by what they saying. I'd like to see the certificate of analysis on some of that sludge y'all hauling. But anyways, approving, going up, you're putting more pressure on this. The bottom of that landfill, since it was invented in 1992, is black loan. Black loan bubbles and it airs. You're going to get breakouts on the side. I don't care who you are. I've experienced in this stuff. So y'all ain't fooling me by just telling me stuff. I investigate. I've had landfills. I've run landfills. A lot nastier than this thing. And, uh, folks, we got to look at stuff before we just approve things and expand it. We may need to go somewhere else and, and start a new landfill. I don't know what the answer is, but I'm going to find out. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak before the board?
Birdseye, Birdseye's 816 Riverview Drive. Um, in reference to the, the landfill, you know, we, we don't pay too much attention to that because it's way across the way. One of my questions is, uh, for the, the calculations that they're making, are they making the calculations fulfilling of the landfill based on the growth that's taking place here in Kingsland and in St. Mary's? Because you're talking about this thing is going to fill up in 2030, give or take. And we're doing a kind of serious expansion right now, and we seen it. And they seen that it's going to be good till 2030. Is, is that, did, did I lose that? Did you, did you take that into consideration about the growth that we have in right now? And it's...
Yes, that takes into account those calc, that growth.
All right, we don't need to get too much of back and forth here. This is to receive comments from y'all.
Oh.
Yes, those calculations are, are based on, on our knowledge now. Now, if the county really explodes, that might change things. So.
All right. One more thing. Um, this gentleman over here that apparently he's been coming up in, in reference to this activity here, uh, why don't you just buy the guy out? You know, I mean, so that, that area can be, you know, that's my suggestion. Or just try, if he wants to sell it, buy him out. And so that, that would be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Now we need a motion to adjourn the solid waste authority and reconvene to regular meeting.
No movement.
I'll second. Got a first and a second to adjourn the solid waste authority meeting and reconvene to regular meeting. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, we'll do it all over again.
All right, one more time, Commissioners. So number 18, the task, uh, we request for the approval for the task order for the design and permitting of the MSW landfill for the vertical expansion project.
All right, can I get a motion on this item? I'll make a motion. We approve this item. We have a second?
I'll second.
Got a first and a second? Any more discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused. You're, you're gonna, you guys, you're going to design and you're going to pull the permits for this landfill to go vertical, am I correct?
Correct.
And as you do this, are you going to continue to monitor what's going on? And, you know, I mean, the, the public has to know what's going on in the landfill. So how are we going to do that? You know, if the leaching age or whatever you call it, I'm, I'm a layman. You might want to explain what that even means to me, to be honest with you. But I, I, if there's, if there's concern about it, then we've got to get the word out as to what we're doing, how we're going to do it, and so forth. I'm not opposed at all to designing and doing the permitting on it as we move forward, though we continue.
This is all part of the plan that we've worked on when we added that other cell a while back, and it's in operation now, right? So, like, once we added that cell, because what we're doing, only thing we got to place is airspace. That's...
So there's no other land around that we can...
We're creating more airspace by going up. That's all we're doing.
Okay.
Any more discussion?
Well, I, I think the concern about going up is all the external pressure on what's already there, and we're already having leachate issues.
Think he has something to say.
So a, a couple of things. You're going to be operating under your current permit for the next five years, right? And, and not going into the vertical expansion new permit area for that. So over these next five years, yes, you're going to continue to monitor the site, the groundwater, the surface water, the methane. You're going to continue to have inspections from EPD come out and, and look to see that you're operating correctly. And like I said, part of the permitting or the monitoring process is the county uploads all that data to EPD's database every day. The public can get on that site and download that data as a citizen and look and see what tho, that data says. So that, all that's happening, whether you expand or not. Part of the expansion design is to prove that the current system can handle the additional weight of the extra waste on top of that.
And if they can't handle the weight, we just don't go that high.
Correct. That, that's what we'll find out in the design process.
To the bottom line is, we, we can design and permit this. It doesn't mean we have to build it.
That is exactly correct. Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Next one, Seth.
All right, and next is approval of the task order that authorizes and directs Atlantic Coast Consulting to proceed with assisting and, and providing environmental monitoring at our three landfills at the C and D, MSW, and then at the Vacuna Road landfill.
I'll make a motion. We approve this item.
Second.
Got a first and a second to approve the task order. Any discussion on this? All in favor? All right, next item?
All right, next is for the approval for the repair of our damaged Komatsu D-65 dozer by Linder Industrial Machinery for roughly 69,000.
Can I get a motion on this item?
Second.
Got a first and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Next one?
All right, and lastly, for the approval of the purchase of the Caterpillar D-3 LGP dozer from Yancey Brothers.
Make a motion. We approve the Lanny Brandt Memorial Caterpillar D-3 LGP dozer from Yancey Brothers. And thank you, Lanny.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second to approve the purchase of the dozer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, reports, Katie.
I just want to remind everyone that county offices will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, and observance of June 19th. June 19th and observance of Juneteenth. I'm sorry. Thank you, Sheka.
No changes to the calendar? All right, County Administrator comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had, just have a couple. So as of 16, almost 17 minutes ago, the polls close for the Public Service Commission election, so we'll have those results this evening, which may cause a runoff, if we have a runoff. I think the date is July, I'm trying to remember now, 15th, July 15th will be the actual runoff day, and there will be one week of early voting that'll take place if there is a runoff. So I'm praying that there's not a runoff, but again, this is statewide. Camden County's not going to dictate whether it's a runoff or not. We won't know until the state collects all the numbers from the statewide election. Aside from the election, I do have some good news to report regarding the planning for the upcoming fiscal year budgets. We will be showing these numbers whenever we have the final hearing and adoption at the next meeting on, next Tuesday evening. But we did get our insurance numbers back, and I'm happy to report that we are seeing, compared to what we budgeted, we're actually going to come in around 176,000 under what, what we had preliminarily budgeted, which is a, a great thing for us. It reduces our amount of fund balance being used. The better thing is that our trends within law enforcement have been very good, and we've seen a 9% reduction in, almost a 9% reduction in our law enforcement liability and law, excess law enforcement liability policies. So that's the premiums that we saw that reduction in. So just a, a big kudos to our sheriff and all that he's doing. We appreciate you, Sheriff. The policies that you're implementing and the work that you all are doing every day, we greatly appreciate that. It actually has a very meaningful impacts to the budgets and the taxpayer dollars that we expend. So again, we'll be highlighting this again next Tuesday evening when the board intends to adopt the budget. That's all I have, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and just real quick, Mike, is Lance here? I don't know if, okay, so I do want to just thank Mike and Lance Landers and all of our HR staff that has really contributed to this. Mike and his team, they've done a phenomenal job, not just kind of being creative when they're outsourcing and going through these insurance renewals, but even shifting in the way in which we have some of our policy structures. So the only real way that we were able to achieve these benefits or these, these premiums the way we were was through some creative, um, kind of restructuring of the way we run some of our programs, but then also looking at opportunities for, including further cost savings, even to our health insurance, our pharmaceuticals that we have, the pharmacies that we use. Mike, I just want to commend you and your staff for doing a phenomenal job on that. Definitely means a lot to the bottom line of the budget and to the taxpayers of the community. And again, if I can, Ms., Ms. Janey, Ms. Everett, if we can just have another round of applause to thank you all for everything that y'all have done for the Thicke Memorial. And that's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to our last public comment section of the night. We're limited to three minutes. Anybody ready? Anybody wish to speak before the board?
Thank you. I'm Radha Sutton. I'm chairman of the Woodbine Public Library Board of Trustees, and I just want to thank you for reinstating Colleen Winkle to this board. I think that Martin has pointed out the fact that we are not just a board that supervises the library. We're a very active board, and we actually do a lot of the planning for the library and participate in all of the activities down there. So we're, we're happy to have another working member of our board. Oh, to thank you for, I forgot what I was going to say. Hate that. Oh, oh, yeah, for increasing our budget. One of the main things we want to do is have the library open every morning rather than three mornings a week. We found out that the courthouse actually uses the library for downloading documents. The people who come to the courthouse are not allowed to download things, so they come down to the library to use our, our machinery and everything that we have down there to, to download the documents that they need. So I'm sure all of the citizens who have run into that problem will appreciate what you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for the board?
Patty Vogel, Thicke Memorial. Thank you all so very much for what you have done for Thicke and for the support that you have given us. But Thicke still needs a new home. We need a new building, and we do need an increase in the funds that you all have given us. We actually consider that. And please, please, please help us find a building. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion. We adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a first and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Thank y'all.